I never let you on residence.
Good to see you.
I'm looking, it doesn't look like it could be too long.
It's not. I'll arrange that. Anything else, Michael, that I need?
That's it. That's it for now.
I'm sure I'll come up with something.
Come up with something.
Did you ever find out?
No. It's what it actually, but the picture is actually looking east from what was the old fishing. And I'm talking about the old pier, old pier, not, you know, not the one that's right there.
Miss Cheryl, and we are?
We're at, we're at seven P. M. Okay, call the roll force, we're called to order, please. We are governed by the Freedom of Information Act, so anybody who wishes to have a copy of this meeting can have so from City Hall. Would you call the roll force, please?
Yep, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Grant, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Pratt? Ms. Doublefield here, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
You have a quorum?
We have a quorum. Okay, we need a motion for approval of the minutes from June the seventh.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, no personal appearances unless we have somebody that I don't know of in the audience that wants to talk? No? Okay. All right. Okay. And no citizens' comments, I would assume, too? Okay, unfinished business? Do we have any unfinished business that anybody knows of?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, and the first one, do you want to brief us on that particular ordinance?
Yep, so this is ordinance twenty-two, twenty-one. It is pertaining to the shipping containers. We had a work session a few months ago, kind of recapping these changes that were from a shipping container committee before COVID, so you guys should be pretty familiar. Basically, the ordinance is making specific points that were recommended by the shipping container committee, saying that shipping containers are okay for structural components. Shipping containers should be regulated in a way that mitigates the shipping container aspect, so you can't really tell that it's a shipping container. And then, there was an agreement of temporary uses of shipping containers need to be regulated with specific requirements for flood and when security and time limits. So if we have a hurricane, that a shipping container is not going to be on the island causing more damage than the hurricane. So ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one covers all of those recommendations from the shipping container committee, and that's what you'll see in red in your packet.
Are there any questions? Anybody have a question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I told Eric ahead of time I was gonna hit him up on this.
Okay.
On the, I guess it would be the third page, section point zero-five dash zero-six. It says on four, any shipping container between May and December should be anchored. And my question was, how?
What we require, actually, I think maybe if you have to have an engineer detail how they want to anchor it. Typically, they run straps all the way over the top and then put in what I call mobile home anchors.
Right.
Anchors are going in the ground.
And, like, you know what my house looks like? I have nothing but driveway. So, my problem with this, if I got a pod, I would have to drill holes in my driveway to anchor it. Because there's, there's no grace period whatsoever. So if I had a pod for one day to be in compliance, I would have to, I have no yard, I mean, I have nothing but driveway and driveway. And I think there's gotta be something in here for people to have a certain amount of time before they have to anchor it.
Do we have the?
You don't get a lot of time before a storm, there's sometimes.
Well, and then the flip side of it, what do we do for dumpsters with a storm? Don't we make people move them?
Make them dump them or pull them off the island.
I, I would rather see us, if, have some language in here that if we're under a threat or a warning or something, that they have to be moved, or have some time on here that people have to, um, anchor them, rather than just have it one day and have to drill holes in the driveway or something.
All right, a temporary, I would think, a temporary, like a pod, you're only gonna have it there for a certain period of time for a certain use.
Hopefully.
It is not for normal storage or anything else, my interpretation of a pod, okay? A shipping container, what they're using these for is a storage unit, just like you built a garage on the back of your house or something like that. I think it's what this is.
But they have pod written here as well.
They do have the word written in there. Yes, okay, so.
So I'm fine with the document, but I'd like to see some language that, similar to whatever Eric, we have for dumpsters and portlets, whenever that, those things have to be moved, I think this document should reflect that. And I think there ought to be a, some kind of grace period. Somebody only has it for one to three days or seven days, I don't see where it needs to be strapped down.
Unless there's a hurricane.
And, and, well, then it revert back to the language for the dumpsters.
Yeah, if somebody delivers it on, you know, October eighteenth, and they have a storm, you know, and a week later, like you said, maybe the language about removing it during storm notice, and maybe you wanna differentiate between a longer-term storage, like shipping container versus a pod, which is truly meant for short-term under the house.
Yeah, the pods are usually, you're loading something, taking it someplace else.
Typically.
Yeah.
Yes, but I've seen where, where they're doing substantial renovations or new construction where they'll keep a pod on site for six months.
Yes, true.
So I was gonna, this has it here that you can't keep a pod for more than ninety days or it counts as an accessory structure, and I don't know why it was changed, because they're intended for temporary storage to be moved on your property and off. I mean, I would think it should stay at thirty days, do y'all not?
Eric, could somebody just keep a pod legally on their property forever if they so chose?
If it fell within the accessory structure requirements and it was strapped down accordingly and, yes, theoretically, if it fit within all desert ordinance with a setback slot coverage.
They painted the logo off, they, they strapped it down.
Yep.
If all of a sudden we have a hurricane come, how many pods do you think the company can pick up?
I don't think they would reasonably be able to get them off.
Never guarantee on that kind of stuff, you know, we can create all the laws in the world.
Yeah, I mean, there're gonna be pods all over the place.
The only thing good about having it in the ordinance is it gives you some teeth, one, and two, if there is some sort of damage or something that the people did not abide by the law, gives the person that got injured a lot better chance of winning their case than if we don't have any of them.
Eric, from a practical enforcement standard, how do you go about and identify places that have dumpsters on a normal hurricane season?
We go by permits, you know, we track by permitting.
Okay.
We keep, we obviously don't track people that bring a dumpster on that we don't know about or have a permit on, and so there's nothing that's perfect by any means.
So for practical enforcement, would it be even possible for you to add this to your list of things you have to do right before a hurricane?
Typically, we require permits for encroachments, you know, most people put pods in the driveway, we make them get an encroachment permit for that, so we do have a tracking mechanism, but if Joe Blow decides to have one dropped off, I mean, we're not gonna know about unless somebody, on chance, somebody notices it and have the reason to inquire.
Are we making changes to the document to send to council, is that where we are with this one?
You are making recommendations to council on this ordinance.
Okay.
For one thing, on that second page at the bottom, it say it should be painted with no visible logos, brands, lettering. I think we should also add that any hardware be removed, like the large door handles on there.
Okay, we need to go back now, if, of course, if we're making changes, we need a motion and a, and a second for discussion, so can we have a motion?
I'm making a motion for discussion.
Okay, all right, we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, now we can change the document.
Can we read the motion one time?
The motion is rather lengthy there, but we can.
A whole motion? Four pages long.
Is it in print?
You don't have it.
Are you talking about just removing the hardware?
Okay, you, are you wanting to read the entire, entire four pages there into the record, is that what you're wanting?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I didn't know the motion was four pages long.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, no problem. Okay, we've got the motion, we can second, so now if we want amendment to what is here, we need a motion for that amendment.
And then we can discuss it?
Yes, we can.
Okay, motion for amendment to item H under section one sixty-four point oh-four dash oh-two, to add wording to remove any exterior hardware.
If, if we do that, how do the pass?
You define that somewhere?
Like the handles?
I mean, in the, in the language of the ordinance, you define that?
If we have them remove that, how does the, the storage unit stay closed or get opened?
Well, to somebody, to a builder, hardware could make the hinges.
Oh, you're right, okay.
You have to define it in some way.
Handles or things that make it look specifically like a shipping container, 'cause this ordinance right here is specifically addressing shipping containers used in construction as a modular component, so not as like a freestanding one in the yard.
So you're suggesting that they don't have those, like, the metal things to lock the door and all that stuff?
If you're using it.
How are they gonna lock the doors?
Well, if you're using it as a, as a building component, wouldn't it?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Our motion?
It looks like it is.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
Mr. Anderson?
I second.
Okay, thank you.
So wouldn't it be permanently welded shut if you're using it as a component of your construction?
Wow.
Whoa, 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 okay.
How would you get into it?
Okay, let's go back and define it as to what we're looking at here.
Yeah. So item H is talking about using shipping containers in the construction of a residential structure.
Right.
So you wouldn't be using it for storage in that case.
Okay, you're, in this section here, it's referring to incorporating it into the structure itself?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So we're trying to minimize it looking like.
So we want it to look as much like a building as possible?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Would you wanna say something to protect it, the, the opening side of the container must be oriented away from the driveway?
That would be great.
Because I do know that Jason Capo, who did the one over here under the pool, he does use that underneath there to get access to pumps and other things.
Oh, okay.
That's exactly.
Welling the door shut may not be an option for a guy like that.
And?
That might be another way to.
Orienting it the other way may not work, too, depending on the structure that limits its use.
And there's also a screening requirement, I think, which might, maybe those things together could.
Could you say something about it has to conform with the residential structure to which it's attached, something like that?
But who's the judge of that?
Yeah.
Pretty much you.
We don't have an ARB, I mean, we don't have an ARB for the residential area.
I don't see people putting hardy plank on them.
Isn't there, Katie, isn't there a screening requirement already built in here or something?
I thought it was a screening.
Like fence or something, I thought, I thought they always talked about before. I can't remember.
Not for single and two-family designs. It's not a design standard, no.
But again, just thinking of Jason's, 'cause that's the only one I know of on the island, if you had a requirement to screen where all the hinges were, in his case, that would be really difficult, 'cause that would mean the screening would be in the middle of his driveway.
Yeah.
So.
Well, knowing, he knew the ordinance before he built it, he would design it, you know, he could design and spend it, change it.
Are you talking about the pool?
Yes.
You'd have to assume that the person using it, this ordinance would be in place, and they would design it according to, in theory.
Well, right now, if, if this ordinance, if you're going for a building permit, you've got to comply with this ordinance, once this is passed.
Right.
So.
So you're, and you're right, somebody might fall through the cracks if it's already designed.
If it's, if it's already there, but for right now, anybody that applies for a new permit, this gets, gets. Okay, any wording down here we want to change?
I kinda think we've already done that, about that it's not to look like a shipping container.
Okay.
Is that in here, Michael?
Yeah, it is in there.
That's H, that's the one she's talking about, from logos, brands, lettering, advertisements.
Right, yeah.
So it should incorporate itself into the dwelling?
Right.
Should look like a dwelling, okay.
Anything else?
I think maybe we should add a little, something like that, that it should be incorporated into the design of the project.
The dwelling?
But then that puts Eric under the duress of, I mean, to interpret what that means to an individual building.
This also is specific to a residential structure.
Yeah.
I mean, as staff, we would need something clear defining.
Exactly.
Used in the construction of a residential structure.
I don't wanna leave you in that unwrapping situation.
It's interpretation, everybody's got a different interpretation. Can't even see what minimum.
Well, and then, you know, towards the end, they have it under one sixty-six oh-five dash four, shipping containers and the like, or other similar using instructions shall be finished in a manner typical of residential structures.
Okay, so am I adding that just into the same?
On the la, on the last page?
Well, I see.
Yeah, on the last, yeah, the last two pages.
So that, that wording, that wording for H is the same wording that's in seven, under one sixty-six oh-five oh-three. The wording is, does pertain to single and two-family design standards and to multi-family design standards, that in residential structures, shall be finished in a manner, but it only includes painting, removal of logos, brands, lettering, and advertisements, so it's the surface color and appearance. So Paula was saying, should it have, should it be oriented in some way, or reduce the appearance of industrial aspects, but what does that look like? I, I'm assuming that was kind of the point of, of the motion. Um, 'cause right now, this current language just, only does surface aesthetics, not anything with orientation.
You look to Commercial Design Standards, one sixty-six oh-five oh-five, paragraph three, wouldn't you wanna have a commercial structure with signage on it?
Well, it'd be no container logos is what, that's.
But that's not what that actually says, and I suppose it's a mean, but, but you're right, the way that reads it could be, like, if it was at a hotel, it couldn't have the hotel's name on it.
Yeah.
Or at least just not on the shipping container portion.
Right, yes, on the container itself, yes.
Why don't we check off item H by making the wording the same as number seven and H under one sixty-six oh-five oh-four, where you just add it in, shall be finished in a manner typical of residential structures.
Okay.
I think that's already in there.
No.
No, it's not. But.
Oh, I see it, understood.
Okay.
In a manner typical of residential structures at Polly Beach, what's that?
It's gonna be a, that'll be a great area, I'd like to work there.
That's gonna be up to interpretation.
That'll get you to say to interpret, Eric.
That'll be a tough one.
So, just because I think Jason's house, which is, is, kinda was the impetus for this coming to the attention of the council, would you think that the way he finished it, all painted white, is, would meet this new standard? I mean.
For me, it'd be hard to look at it and say that it doesn't.
I, I, I think it looks really nice myself, but.
It looks like the rest of the house.
I think it looks like, yeah.
Somebody might as well say, no, it's completely different, but it, it seems to be in keeping with the property.
So for you, your, your interpretation, I mean, that would be consistent with the meaning of?
In my opinion, that example would be.
Okay.
But that's just me, I mean.
I agree.
Say something completely.
I agree with you.
Anything else, you wanna make a motion to anything to change, ladies or no?
That, for the whole thing, or just that part?
Just that part.
Just that part, just how we said to finish, um, to add in the wording, uh, finished in a manner typical of residential structures.
Okay, all right, we made that as a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, we're gonna call for a vote on the mo, on the, um, on the change, yeah, I'll get the word out, and then it's, on the change.
Whatever it is.
All right.
Will work. Could, could we have somebody read back what it's gonna say now?
Yeah, I can read it, I wrote it down.
Okay.
So the, should the, sub-paragraph H should be, shipping containers and the like, any shipping container or other similar modular component used in the construction of residential structure shall be finished in a manner typical of residential structures, comma, at a minimum, comma, painted with no visible logos, brands, letterings, and advertisements on the exterior surface.
Okay.
And that's being inserted in the?
Yes, that's how the new will.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that, any other discussion on that? Okay, can you call the role on the motion, okay, the amendment to that?
Um, Mr. Grant?
Uh, yes.
Um, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, now we have that amendment, now we're back to the motion itself with the amendment.
I have another amendment.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's gonna be in one sixty-four point oh-five dash six, um, that same one five, any portable shipping container pod or, um, I'm sorry, any portable, portable shipping container pod or similar device used for storage between May and December must be anchored. I'd like to add in there, any portable shipping container pod or similar device used for storage longer than seven days between May first and December first shall be anchored. And that way, if somebody does rent one, they got seven days to get it on the property and get it off before they have to anchor it. If it takes longer than seven days, then, you know, they have to, have to anchor it.
Okay.
Do you want to add wording that says if a tropical storm or hurricane watches issue during that timeframe?
I, I.
You're responsible for anchoring it or removing it?
I think that if a pod company, if someone, if we were under a warning or something, I don't think a pod company's gonna deliver a pod out here.
And it could be here.
No, I don't think.
But if it's, if it's seven days, though, I mean, we, we've got to draw, in my opinion, we've got to draw a line somewhere.
I don't think your language, doesn't hurt you to have it in there then.
Agree.
You'd never, never go wrong.
We have a motion there, do we have a second to this motion?
Which one, to just Randy's part?
Randy's part.
We have to prove that before we can add language, if we want to add your language.
What can I add to Heather?
You made.
I made a motion.
You made a motion to change the, the language.
To change that language, right.
Right.
She was trying to make a motion on top of my motion, and we didn't have a second.
Oh, whoa, 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 we got it, okay, well, do we have a, a mo, a second to Randy's?
I said that Randy's motion.
You got a second Randy's motion, okay, any other discussion on that portion?
What is that portion we're talking about?
Paragraph four, one sixty-four oh-five dash oh-six.
Got it.
And it would say, any portable shipping container pod or similar device used for storage longer than seven days shall be anchored between May first and December first.
I'd say that just, that more than seven days, no matter when it is. I mean, you can have storms other than hurricanes.
Well, you can have an nor'easter air that come up in January blowing fifty mile an hour winds, you can't, you can't do that.
It'd be easier for.
How's the city gonna, yeah, how's the city gonna?
Just strike seven days.
Just straight seven days, okay.
I have no problem with changing my motion to that language and omitting the dates that are currently in there.
Got it, okay, so it's okay with you regardless?
Seven days.
All right, on the second, is that, you okay with that?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Gonna take out the December through?
Yeah. So that it's all the time, Eric, you had something you wish to say?
No, I was agreeing with you.
Oh, okay, all right, so now, we're, we're back to it, anytime we have taken that out that says it's May to December, okay, all right.
Well, we put seven days.
Seven days. Do people have to get a permit to bring a pod on your property?
We're supposed to issue one, we, we call it an encroachment permit, I can't say that it always happens, but if they inquire or where it gets around, we do issue one.
Because how are we gonna know when it's seven days?
We won't, except for the neighbor reporting it or one of us, somebody noticing it, which is how most everything is reported on the ordinance.
That makes sense.
It's pretty tight enforcement out here, but.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on that?
So, for what, for what it's worth, Google says that pods can withstand up to a hundred and ten miles an hour.
Really?
So, I mean, you get more than that.
Well, like loaded.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna have a lot of stuff flying around beyond, you know, I mean, pods, pods are gonna be the least of the worries, in my opinion, but that's. That's a loaded pod or a non-loaded pod? Uh, did it say? I think it said. Cause if you weigh the weight of the stuff in.
Wind fully loaded.
Wind fully loaded, okay, okay.
Wind fully loaded, which, I'm surprised, but I didn't, it sounds bad.
Well, it's, it sounds okay, so, all right, got the motion and the second, any other comments before we vote?
Do people come back on us about that? If that's proven that they can withstand a hundred and ten miles an hour?
We won't worry about it.
Okay, fine.
So when they come back, we'll consider it?
Okay, fine.
That's right, if they, if they kick it back to worse for consideration, yes, we'll consider it.
Okay, fine, go, go forward.
Go forward, okay, can we vote on that motion, please?
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion on one sixty-six oh-five dash oh-five, the Commercial Design Standards, I don't think we should say that there doesn't have to be any lettering or logos and stuff like that, if the rest of the building can have it, why not allow it on a storage container as well?
Okay.
So I would, I would strike, uh, the, no visible logos, brands, and lettering on the exterior.
And this is on the commercial?
Yeah, it's, paragraph three.
So if that's the case, you could take out that entire number three?
Yeah, that's what I do.
Okay.
All right, you want to strike number three, okay, all right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
I, I do, the, the one thing I like about that is it has to be painted, and if we take that out, then.
We still have a DRB for commercial uses, um, so the, the DRB would still have to approve the shipping container aesthetics for the commercial design.
That covers what I was talking about.
Yeah, 'cause this section, this is not residential here, we're, we're strictly commercial.
This is all commercial.
Right, right, and they, and the design review board does have pre, preview over commercial, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on that portion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other, um, discussion on that portion?
Are you sure you don't want them to just remove the shipping container logo, but be able to fit their own like that one?
So, I'm thinking of a situation where somebody buys a shipping container that's covered with really cool graffiti.
Um.
Um, versus one that says Hong Ching China. I mean.
Yeah, but it's still subject to the design review board.
Do they have guidelines for it? Yes, they have.
They have preview, yes.
Yeah. All right, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. Are we ready for the vote? Any other comments? We ready for the vote? Can we vote on that motion, please?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we're back to the motion with the amendments. So, we're, that's what we're voting on. With the amendments that we have, um, approved and we're voting on the full motion to go back to council at this point. So, can we have that role, please?
Yes. Okay, um, Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yep.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
I have a question before we, um, just go to a different track. This didn't address using a shipping container as a permanent accessory structure.
It did. It says within.
It is, yes.
Well, it says if you keep it longer than ninety days, it'd be considered an accessory structure. Yes. Do we, okay?
So, I think that what that means, like at our house, if I wanted to get a shipping container, get a permit for it, properly tie it down, cut it up, I can make it into a greenhouse or something, but not like a living structure.
All the other requirements of the.
All the relevant building and zoning.
Right.
You just can't live in it.
Well, if, if the building and zoning requirements are changed and allow you to, you could, but.
Do you mean all the building codes for like a?
Yeah.
Oh, for a home.
Right. If it was the primary structure.
Right, primary structure, there you go. All right. Okay, so we're, we're going to, um, do we vote on the whole motion with the amendments?
Yes.
We did, that's what we did.
Okay. All right.
Or the twenty-two dash twenty-one is closed.
Okay, that's, that's, that's it done. Okay, all right, Michael. Okay, okay, ordinance twenty-three, twenty-one. We have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll strike it.
Okay, it's open for discussion.
Um, before we get too deep into it, on the very first page, the last thing, it says, um, not to be permitted in any residential district of the city.
Where is this?
On the ve- on the very first page, the last thing it says, under B one.
Commercial parking is not to be permitted in any residential district of the city.
Yeah, the washout and all the beach parking lots are all in a residential area.
That is different from a commercial parking lot.
Um, it, it says, "Commercial parking is any exchange of compensation for parking shall be considered commercial parking." So, our ordinance, we go against it now as this reads. As it's written, we're.
I, I believe that city functions, like, city hall does not have to comply with the zoning ordinance. And city hall does not have to comply with, um.
I disagree with that.
Well, it's the same with like the north ordinance, um, when it comes to utility workers, trash workers.
Right.
So, since that is. That's city parking. It is not a private, commercial parking.
City doesn't have to give a residence license to run the parking.
Right, but, but I mean, the definition in here makes it commercial parking. Uh, what I'm saying is ordinance makes it commercial parking. I mean, it clearly states what commercial parking is in exchange of compensation for parking.
And the city doesn't technically operate that parking even. They farmed it out to a outside vendor, right?
Right.
So, isn't technically even run and coordinated and enforced by the city?
It's, it's run on a contract basis, you know, where it's, it's anything.
Yeah, the language just goes against itself completely. I'm not saying it's wrong or right, I'm just saying the.
I think it's referenced elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, which is what I'm, that city uses basically don't have to comply to your, your zoning ordinance, but, um.
But I just, I have a problem having the ordinance in front of me that completely contradicts itself. In my humble opinion.
But this ordinance is, I mean, this, um.
I think it was bad language from a long time ago.
Yeah, one sixty-four oh three oh three, commercial uses, is in the, the present zoning order, right? So, what we're doing is we're proposing amending the, the current zoning, right?
Well, I'm saying if that's what the zoning says, this doesn't say the same thing.
Right, but that would be an issue if you want here tonight to talk about the other.
Right, right.
From the two thousand four.
I think that's gonna be have to, have to be looked at by city staff to see where, and, and I don't think that's in our purview tonight, but I just wanna bring that to your attention and that.
It's a good point.
Do we know it?
Right, though, there, you know, you have to look at it with the rest of the ordinance, there may be language in there.
I hadn't seen it.
Well, you've probably done more research. That we're seeing on it, but I know that's been in there since the two thousand four re- at least. If we need to change it, we do need to change it.
That's, that's, that's my whole point. When we finally do look at these and bring them up again and we see something like that.
Is a good time to bring it up, I guess.
Well, I have a different question on the commercial parking lots we do have. Are they all generally the same size that we know of? Like, I wonder if we need to add something about, you need to have one trash can for every twenty-five parking spaces. But if they're all basically the same size.
Are they all a, a lot size?
Most of what we have currently is just a standard full-size lot.
Yeah.
The only ones that are not would be behind, the one behind Rita's, and those are different sized lots in there. The ones.
Yeah, they're planted to be smaller.
They're planted to be smaller, yes.
They look like a full lot.
They do, they do. The other parking lots in there, um, they are standard seventy by one fifty. And, uh, at each one of them. The only one that would be different is the one that's immediately behind Rita's there.
Would this also affect where Cosmicharles and Pineapple Places, because that is technically a parking lot?
Well, technically, that would, technically, you're not. That would be the next ordinance, twenty-four dash twenty-one. Those are lots with outdoor retailers.
Okay.
And so those, the trucks, cars. Stand are outdoor retailers.
And, um.
Randy, did we settle with your question?
Um, we, it's gonna have to be, um, figured out by city staff where the ordinances fall within that, in my opinion, Greg.
Okay.
Yeah, because it just, I, I don't, we can't really pass, I don't see where we can pass that wording on to council when it contradicts itself.
Right.
And, um, overall, I'm great with this. And, um, one of the first, whereas it's public restroom facilities are limited in the commercial district of the city in Folly Beach, I think we need to go further. The public left, restrooms are really limited further out in Folly. I think all the paid parking lots, including the beach lot, should have a portal. I, I, I think we stopped short there.
Talking about a lot of money.
Oh, that's a lot, I think a lot of money.
It's, it's up to the, it's up to the operator of the lot.
Yeah, we stole a lot. All the other lots in the, like, you're talking about are, are all up around the city.
The lots that the beach people have, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, we have, i- if we're, if we're gonna make the commercial guys have these, when we have restrooms all around Center Street, why are we eliminating all the ones out towards the washout and?
Just, I'll just let you know that, that, because I remember when it happened, we tried that for a while on Tenth Block East and the neighbors clicked. They did not want port-a-potty in a lot right across from.
And there's only like eight spots in most of those, I mean, it's, not like.
One, catchback, we tried around Fourth and July one year, and that didn't go very well.
Well, it, it, you got a lot of kickback for the one at the washout, too.
Got a lawsuit that happened.
Yeah, there's lawsuits, right, that actually, uh, yeah.
And that was like a Cosmichal port-a-potty.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
Deluxe.
So, just, that's something, I mean, you guys obviously can suggest whatever you want, but that, that may be one of the reasons that hasn't, that path doesn't.
Well, and the good thing about this one, it's written that it has to be screened properly and has to look nice. And, um, and wheth- whether the motion passes or not, I would like to make a motion that, um, all paid parking lots, including beach ones, would have to comply to this.
So, you want your, um, fifty-foot easements up and down the, um, on the beach to all have restrooms with them? Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street?
All the paid parking.
All the, okay, all right.
All the paid parking lots.
But there's not that many parking spaces.
There, if, a lot of them, you park on the left and then there's some parallel on the right, a lot of them you can't even park on the right. And so, if, if you get the spot way up in the front corner, you probably have room. But I mean, if, if they can demonstrate there's no room, but these guys are making a lot of money off that parking and.
But we're gonna have porta potties all up and down the beach everywhere.
At this point, a bit of a concern during storm season, anyway.
That's a, that's a problem to me.
Well. During storm season, they would have to move it by the other ordinances.
I mean, that's twenty.
And the, the they in this situation is city.
The city.
Cause city, it's city right-ofways that, so.
It's all city, city right-ofway, city one.
It's not a, it's not a private individual like these other commercial.
Isn't this could own the person who operates the lot?
We all.
Yeah, the city operates those lots.
The city does.
So, I thought that company had a lease for all those lots.
It's not a lease, they just work on a contract with us.
Okay.
It's like a, uh, not even, not even similar to, to editorial service, I guess.
Okay, okay. I misunderstood the relationship.
Their maintenance.
Right.
Their maintenance of the lots, yeah. If a meteor breaks or whatever, their job is to fix.
Not saying you can't do, I'm just trying to think about some of the.
Well, I just see them doing the weed eating, pulling the trash cans out, pulling trash cans in.
That's all by contract that we've agreed to. And, you know, that can be done, but a port-a-potty, you gotta have, if you had a contractor to pump it. If we have a storm, we've got twenty paid lots out there, not including the washout. So, we'd have twenty toilets to get off the beachfront and take somewhere, you know, it's just something we have to think about. It's, it's just more overhead, we have to.
I would look at it more to be the company's responsibility, like the weed eating.
That company still, that becomes, becomes the city because.
We are the company for those particular lots. They belong to the city, they're city, and we lease them for.
We do, we lease the services, we do not lease the land.
Right, we'll lease the services in there.
And, and if you require porta potties and all that, there's gonna be a cost, which means the parking's gonna go up or the city taxes are gonna go up.
I'm still happy with the motion whether I get a second or not.
Okay, repeat your motion for me, please.
The, the paid parking would include all of the, um, beach parking lots.
Okay.
For rent.
We have a motion for.
For rentals.
For, for a park, port, yeah.
Do, no, we, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
I tried.
Okay, all right, I have an idea for your.
So, I move we, uh, adopt this thing?
Wait, I have a.
No, you have an amendment, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I would like to motion an amendment for number four to say, provide at least two ninety-six gallon roll cart trashcans and one ninety-six gallon recycling bin.
I'll second that.
Where is this?
Number four on.
Second page.
Yeah, on the back of the first page of the law.
So, in addition to the at least two ninety-six gallon roll cart trashcans, you wanna say, and at least one recycling bin?
Yeah, I mean, I would be happy with one trashcan, one recycling bin, but.
Well, what do you want your issue to?
Can I, can I give a second opinion?
I think we should have a recycle. But, but people don't use the recycle as they, as a recycle. They put all the trash in it so it becomes trash. It's, it's just garbage, it's not recycled. Most people don't, most people don't think about that.
Okay, we wanna restate, Eric has something to say.
On that note, our orange trucks have to dump recyclables every single weekend in the big season. Only time that ever becomes another problem is sometimes in the off-season when the locals actually do the right thing. The minute we get into this time of year, any recycling out there gets dumped in the trash.
It goes to the.
Oh, just because.
It gets damaged so bad, it's amazing.
Okay. So, our guys have to pick those up?
Food, pineapples, diapers, beer, you name it.
Would it make any difference if we got the recycling ones that have the little holes so?
We tried it on Center Street, doesn't work.
Doesn't work, okay.
If you, I mean, people, you can barely get trash out there, you know, in the summertime. It's unreal. So, I would actually be in favor of more trashcans, 'cause I don't like being a hypocrite and, you know, every time we dump a blue bin in a orange truck, somebody grabs that. But the reality is reality. We have to dump, especially when they're overflowing, every Saturday morning, Sunday morning.
So, you think three trashcans instead of?
I would just say stick with trashcans, you know, however many you think is right.
How many, I mean, you, you, you know the city better than we do as far as patrolling it.
Say a minimum two per lot.
Two per, two per access?
Per lot?
We're in commercial lots, commercial parking lots, okay.
We have many beach accesses and we're always, we're always.
They're, they're at the beach accesses, we're talking about the commercial, okay, got it, okay. Well, the commercial lots.
We have a lot of trash in this area at night, you know, and that's what, um, the cabinet committee's been trying to deal with all summer, too. Now, there's tons of trash every Saturday and Sunday morning.
So, your beach accesses are more manageable than your commercial parking lots, is what you're saying?
Because we just manage those as we see fit. If we start having a problem, one, we just add more cans.
We don't need an ordinance to make people do that, 'cause we're the people that are doing that.
All right, so we're commercial lots, adding, um, more trashcans.
Is that, are you amending your motion? So, Randy, your motion is adding one recycling bin.
Are you saying they throw away the recycling?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Why, why make a requirement that isn't gonna be followed?
Okay.
Right.
Uh, there is no, um, thing, nothing here that I see that makes them take it to the street. I mean, that would seem to be obvious.
That's in the trash ordinance already.
Okay, so they have the can and they're responsible for it, okay.
We should be able to apply that.
Okay.
People that are coming to the beach that are rec- are, are into recycling are going to carry it back home if there's not a recycle bin.
And there's nothing says they can't put a recycle bin, you're just not.
We're just not mandating it by law.
And you're not.
Always have the trash to do that.
They throw trash in them, then it becomes trash.
Parking lot owner wanted to be really diligent and, and watch their customers come and go and scream at them if they start to put something on.
Good luck.
You know, they can manage that lot.
I mean, if someone wanted to put a compost bin on there, they could. We're just not gonna mandate, assuming we're not gonna mandate it by ordinance. I'll can mandate it by ordinance, but.
On some section five, the provide delineation in the form of fencing, um.
Well, that was a request that, from, uh, mostly from public safety, because they're having a real hard time with, um, the, the, the commercial lot people or parking people on the right-of-way area and charging for it, which is not legal.
Oh.
They're also just having general habit and flow problems with trying to keep the path of, just people walking open.
Okay.
So, Andrew had requested if we could get, um, some sort of delineation, it would allow the officer on duty, they don't have time to go look up the GIS, they don't have time.
They can't take it, so it's unfortunate.
You know, pays off every, your ticket, date manager out there, imagine where the right-of-way is, it would just give them reference points.
I was thinking of the type of fencing in order to avoid a repetition of what we now call the Folsom prison lot at the corner of Second and Erie with the six-foot black fence.
Where is that? I'm trying to dig where you have.
So, it's, uh, Second and East Erie, it's, they're putting up a pool, so they put up a, a whole perimeter of six-foot black fencing.
I guess.
Yeah, oh.
Why do we require fencing as opposed to shrubs, something like that?
Cause people will cut through shrubs.
Well, they're not worried about it. They just want a good reference point for a police officer, when they roll up, they can say, there's a.
So, the commercial lot would have some type of fencing to delineate the seventy by one fifty lot? Okay, so that we would know what the right-of-way was?
Right.
Okay.
Gets in a reference point.
Okay.
I sure would like to see a greenery rather than cyclone fence.
You could say like, um.
Dense shrubbery?
Ryan's done a lot of his, probably, you could say, it needs to be a fence with vegetation and tiding, and jasmine or, and sawyer.
But then they have to have irrigation, that's, I mean, that may be a lot on his.
I don't know why you couldn't just put shrubs up to, to double the.
They can hire a landscape company, double it if you want.
And they're.
I think, I think, I think the, um, thought process with fencing is that it doesn't make the commercial lot sacrifice any of their parking spots that they wanna create revenue with. So, it's, it's a fence rather than a five-foot landscape buffer.
Okay.
Um, I, I think that was why we chose fencing, not just because.
I'd say fencing or shrubs. Let them decide what they want for you.
Would you like to form an amendment?
All right, I'll make a.
Yeah, so, for my amendment, can we just table it, or do we have to go all the way through?
We can just say you just.
You, you can withdraw if you wish.
I'll withdraw.
You withdraw, okay. All right, Mr. Grant?
What about fencing or, what, planting?
Dense shrubbery, a minimum of three and a half feet tall or four feet tall. It has to be, no, it has to be specific or someone's gonna put.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
One thing I'm thinking of right now, 'cause we fight it constantly, you know, today we're dealing with, um, unless you figure out a way to form the language so it ties it to a fence or some type of vegetation, you know, you don't want some prickly, I don't know what they name it, some prickly pearling that grows up after two years.
Spanish swords.
Growing in the right-of-way and then pushing it along the street where they can't walk.
Yucca bushes.
Yeah, so the, so the kids are.
I don't know.
The main fencing is the answer.
Fence, compact shrubbery. You don't want Spanish.
Shrubbery, oh, god.
I'm not just a fence, it's gonna be cleaner and it's, it's, it's gonna solve all that safety, it's gonna solve the maintenance, it's not gonna take up parking spaces.
And I think the, the DRB would still have a review on the, the aesthetics, right?
Okay, so, that, what do we want as a way?
For sure, yeah. For sure, yeah, I guess so.
What's the minimum of the fencing, could they put up an eighteen-inch fence, I mean, what's?
Fencing or plantings. We don't, I don't think we have a minimum, we have maximum heights, but we don't have a minimum, I don't believe it yet, maybe, you know.
You don't have a minimum?
I've, I've never thought of that, I don't think we've ever talked about it.
Has to be at least like a three-foot for fence.
You can easily put a minimum.
I think we need to add a minimum height on that.
Yeah. Some of the tires on these trucks are.
So you want to add to your motion a minimum of three feet?
A three feet, yeah, okay.
We, we got a motion on the floor right now, Mr. Grant's motion on the floor with shrubs.
That's right.
Okay, do we have a second to Mr. Grant's motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that it can be shrubs or fence, correct?
Yep.
Okay, now.
Same high frequency.
I would say, would you say shrubs or plantings, though?
To be maintained at the expense of the commercial lot owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but that, I think that probably needs to be.
Or you could say, um, plantings designed not to encroach into the right of way.
That's perfect.
But I think it should be, if, it should be one or the other, you know, to look aesthetically better. You know, it's, one's gonna have some, some scraggly, well, I would rather have plants too, but you gotta keep those plants alive.
If you look at six-twenty East, actually you have the most beautiful fence in the whole island, and all you see is jasmine, there's a fence under it.
Right, right.
It's amazing.
So let's put a.
Right, let's tell us, too, you have beautiful.
If the lot themselves want to plant shrubbery, let them plant it.
I think Mr. Grant's would give them a choice where it's not just a fence, they could do either.
You could have plantings or you could have a fence.
And in the comp plan, it's even written in there to screen the lots from view by plants.
More greenery.
Or greenery, which would coincide with that.
More greenery, yes, right.
And that's also environmentally, you know, conscious, I guess.
Okay, so.
Well, I think, and, anything that pushes people out into the right of way is no good, I mean, I see a, a fence being up there and if they wanna put some nice shrubs inside the fence, fine, put the fence on the property line.
Yes, it cannot be on the right of way, the fence must be on the property line, cannot encroach on the right of way, no.
And shrubs can't, you know, 'cause shrubs grow.
Shrubs can't either, no, no, they cannot encroach on the right of way.
But if they're not controlled, they're gonna encroach.
Right, and push people out.
And then they're. They're gonna encroach onto the.
Well, this little guy back here can ride him a citation and say, shrubs.
We can have, we can have the landscape in Francisco.
Well, he's way too busy for that.
That's, that's.
He can ride by and look at it.
We're only talking about commercial parking lots, so we have, we would be able to moderate.
Yeah, you're not, okay, so where are we on this, the motion that we have, restated for a minute please?
Fencing or plantings?
Fencing or plantings.
Plantings designed not to encourage on the right of way.
Well, I mean. I'm distinguishing the public right away, I think.
There, we do have landscape buffer standards within our zoning ordinance, um, under chapter one sixty-six, so if you wanted to add language to say, um, fencing or, um, landscape buffer in accordance with the landscape.
Perfect, perfect.
That might be able to cover and, and rather than reinvent.
Rather than reinventing everything, okay.
Thank you for your solution.
Get that girl a raise.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I so moved.
You so moved, do we have a second, we have a second, any other discussion, anybody else? Okay, call the roll force, please ma'am.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Well.
Those are first amendment to commercial parking lots.
Okay, that's twenty, okay, we're now with ordinance twenty-four, twenty-one.
Well, we, we haven't.
We haven't voted to send.
Twenty-three, twenty-one. We haven't voted to send that, okay.
We, we approved the amendment.
Okay, we've got the amendment, okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, um, to approve with the amendments.
And I just have one point of order.
Yes, sir.
That language we talked about, Katie?
Mm-hmm.
If we could just, um, make the, um, council aware of that language about B and one.
Yes, yeah, I have in my notes for, um, for staff to research this before we give it to council.
When they bring it up for discussion, okay. Okay.
Alright, we're voting on the motion with the amendments. Okay. Call the roll force, please.
Okay, um, Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Okay, now we're twenty-four, twenty-one, right?
Yep.
So this is the, um.
Restrooms and trash receptacles in the.
Same ordinance, no fence requirement for lots with outdoor retailers, that would be like the lot with Cosmetics, Harleys, um, Pineapple Hut, anything with, um, a vendor in a parking lot, basically.
To like the booze bus or whatever that is about?
Yep, yep.
Alright, and you want a, a restaurant and trash receptacles?
Yes, there's no fence requirement with this, with this lot.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just, I have one question, um, what would this do for festivals? Will we have all the different food vendors on Center Street for a festival?
And would it apply when, like, um, this last year when everything was shut down in December, if I organized some Christmas shopping thing, but there were vendors spread out in all these different places?
Katie, I don't know, how do you think, I don't think this would apply to a festival, because that is, that's on public.
I think there's special.
Yes, I.
There, there is special ordinance on festivals.
It's already approved by council and this and.
Yeah, they have, there's different standards for city sanctioned events.
Okay, that's, that's my only question.
So, like Halloween and those things?
Is city sanctioned?
Right.
Yes.
So something that, city sanction means you, you got a permit for it, not city run, just city sanctioned, okay.
Yeah, anything city sanctioned would have gone through council and the, the planning committee.
Yeah, yeah, so like the, um, all the surf competitions, all of that, they go before council and they get, council gives them permission.
You have a permission to do stuff, yes.
Do y'all think there should be more than one restroom if there are more than two vendors? Because you will see a lot of people lined up at those food trucks in the heat of the summer. Um, there's currently four, one's not a food truck, but there's currently four out there, so they could have more if they wanted, I guess, if it's legal.
So maybe one restroom for each two vendors?
Or at least if you have more than, more than two, you should have at least two restroom rooms out.
I mean, Bollywood's got one restroom.
Yeah.
To drop in.
Your name of places, nobody wants to go in the restroom, I'm just kidding.
I disagree.
Who wants to go in a porta potty?
Yeah, right, but you've got just so many people congregated there, it was my only thought with that, like, the booze pop truck, obviously.
And it would alleviate some of, I'm assuming some of the people going into our great establishments like Bollywood and drop-in and using the restroom when they're not customers, so that might help.
That's kinda where the stem's from.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we want to, are we wanting to amend this motion?
Yes.
Okay, can we have the amendment, please?
Uh, beginning January one, twenty twenty, no outdoor retailer offering the sale of food or beverages shall be located on a property that does not provide at least one restroom facility, if the property has more than two vendors, there should be at least two restroom facilities.
What if it's a very small lot and you're digging two porta potties, you know, eating up the space of a lot?
Oh, we need a, a second to the motion first, okay, that was like a second, okay, we have a motion and a second, now.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just trying to think of where that could happen.
Like even on this lot with four vendors, there's still room for two porta potties and screening.
Well, I think Katie might know the answer to that, if the lot gets smaller, you can't have as many.
There's only so many vendors that we can have.
There's a ratio that they have to follow.
What's the ratio on the number of vendors for seventy-by-one-fifty lot? How many vendors?
If the lot is completely empty, you don't, they're usually commercial parking lots, um.
Right, right, but I mean, if, if they wanted to have, like, the parking lot there, um.
The most I've ever heard of was one of these lots over here could have, have up to four, but that's just the most I've ever heard of so far.
Okay, four, 'cause there's two vendors on that one, um, behind Snapper Jacks, the, you know, over there, there's two vendors, I believe, on that one.
Yeah.
There are little.
Little rental.
Little rental, little.
So would that affect then, they would need to have a restroom?
They don't sell food though, do they?
An outdoor retailer is any business that rents, leases, or sells products, including food products, to the public at a location on Holly Beach, other than in a permanent building or without a permanent location in the city.
So that would be like the bicycle rental lots, that would be the golf cart rental lots?
Any businesses that can have prime business primarily from vehicles of any description, trailers, storage units, mobile units, carts, stands, booths, tables.
But these ordinance says, say, outdoor retailer offering the sale of food and beverage, so it wouldn't apply to the scooter lots.
Yep.
Basically just food trucks.
Food trucks, yeah.
And food trucks.
Like, what, the place where the C B D O L is sold on Ashley?
Moon or potatoes?
That's a, that's.
That's a permanent location.
That's a permanent location.
I know, it's a permanent location, but I went in there to buy something for my wife, and I went down, turned around, and came driving back, and there was traffic backed up. And some van was parked, and it had been in the right of way, 'cause it was in front of one of those vendors. And the girl threw the door open and it knocked the mirror off my car, my car's rather expensive, I'm not gonna go into that, but everybody's honking their horn, everybody's trying to get off the beach, and there was no place for me to pull over and call the cops. So I just went on, and I ended up paying for the mirror myself, I didn't even turn in the insurance. But there should be something that people can park in the right of way for those businesses, 'cause they're very close to the right of way. Those two temporary businesses.
Sounds like that vehicle was already illegally parked.
It kinda does.
Yeah, it's illegally parked, but the cops aren't gonna be down there, but nothing's gonna be done about that, I mean.
We'll call, pick up your phone and call the police?
Do we have, do we have an ordinance that says you cannot park, you cannot park in front of these parking lots and all like that, 'cause that is a public right of way in front of these?
Yeah, four thousand cars.
Yeah, we have the, we have the walking pass delineated right now that you cannot park on, so that pushes you further off the street, but again, if somebody's choosing to ignore proper parking.
Right.
They can be on Center Street, that happens all the time with these, some people don't park properly and just, either you have to call the cops and catch them while it's happening, or, you know, they just get away with it.
Do they tow those cars that are parked, for instance, like eighteen inches into the street, I don't know, they see.
We don't tow any town.
Very rarely, I mean, they could, but use it their gombit by the time the officer gets there, they use it their gombit. We have mirror accidents all summer long out here, not in that spot, we have it up on Center Street a lot, in front of City Hall, in front of the crap shed. And sometimes these people just can't even park in these spaces, you know, they, they put it out in the street. But there's nothing that would prohibit you from parking there if you had the, the right-sized car and you were off the ped path and you were not straight from the building, you know. Sounds like that person parked, probably had the wrong kind of vehicle and didn't park worth it being, you know, probably shouldn't have been parked there, you know.
Right, I mean, 'cause it was, the edge of the van, no, it was a pickup truck, the edge of the truck was next to the white one.
Yes.
And as I came driving down, she threw open her door. And it, I have a wide mirror on that side, I now keep my mirror shut, so they come into the car, so I cut down on the chance of that.
If she had stayed there long enough, she would've got a parking ticket at some point.
You should've taken her door off, Gray.
I, the mirror did a pretty good job, but.
It was worth it then.
And all of a sudden, I, I, I went up and I said, what happened, and the girl that threw the door open said, you ran into our door. And then the other girl gets out of the truck and comes out and says, and she realized they had, they were in the wrong, and she said, it's okay, it's okay. And I'm like, it's not okay, but anyway, I just drove, people were honking their horns, it was, everybody was leaving the beach, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get back to this ordinance, and we have an amendment.
The motion was to add a second restroom if you have more than two vendors, do that.
And we have a motion and a second on that, correct, as an amendment, okay, um, can you call the roll force, please?
Yes, um, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
No.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
So now that's within the, now we need to vote over the motion, we have a motion and a second, will be any other discussion on it before we vote on that plus the. No, okay, alright, we'll call the roll force, please ma'am.
Um, Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Doublefield?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of that, staff comments?
Yes.
Okay, so just to give you guys some updates, um, on the marsh signs at Owen's Island, um, we're working with Mr. Barber, um, council approved a memorandum of understanding to get an agreement with him to remove the signs from the marsh onto city property, um, he is proposing to have a formal easement, so he is drafting that, hopefully that will go to council in August, um, so we.
Formal easement on the city property, okay.
On city property, um, to be, to have his sign and, and have it plotted.
Got, okay.
So that will hopefully go to council in August, um, he, we're working on survey work, obviously surveyors are pushed out pretty far to get anything done, so hopefully we'll see that. Um, the Arctic Avenue study for a bike and walking lane, um, that was in discussion with council, they've identified it as a need for a traffic study to make Arctic function a little bit better. Um, so that is a twenty-twenty-one strategic goal, um, funding has been approved in the twenty-two budget, which went effective, um, July one. So, um, we will in the future be hiring for a firm to do a full traffic study and, and make some recommendations, so.
I think we had a recommendation when we had the traffic committee that we, we're gonna turn East Arctic into one lane.
Yes, sir, so that would be studied, um, to see how the island has grown, um, and it would take all of those past studies, um, into consideration with what the committee has said. Um, the final update that I have is for the Second East Ped Path, so that's a joint county project, um, it is working with, uh, a ped path, some drainage improvements, and a water line, I believe, um, Eric can give you some very specific updates if you guys want to, but just so you know, um, it is in the works and the county's kinda taking charge with all that.
I'm sorry, running from where to where on Second East?
It is running from.
Which piece of that?
Second East to Ped Path.
Indian, Indian.
It goes from Arctic to Cooper.
Yeah, oh, Indian to Cooper, so it does not go back?
Arctic to Cooper.
This phase only goes from Arctic to Cooper.
Got it, okay, okay.
With intensive newer later phases taking.
Right, taking it all back, but that, that's your primary right there, 'cause Cooper is a, a very much traveled.
Along Second East.
And they're heading all the way.
The west side's working great.
Yes, yes.
And we're doing it, we're combining three projects to lessen the impact and, you know, hopefully not waste money by tearing up the road more than once for the same area, so we're gonna put a path to water line, which goes under the river and drainage, I'm putting the drainage there, which goes from Ashley all the way down to the river.
Where is the water line, what water line?
You have a water main that runs down that stream on the right-hand side.
Which, which street, on Second East?
Second East.
Second, on Cooper?
No, Second East.
The one that runs.
Oh, the se, really, okay.
There's a water line that runs perpendicular to the river.
Okay, okay, one of the few that runs that way then, yes, yeah, okay.
That's, we changed that, and so that was already on the project list for water infrastructure, we just decided to wrap the projects together. Again, to try and reduce the impact to a one-shot deal, hopefully.
Yes, bestest.
Um, and that's all the comments.
Okay, alright, any comments from the commissioners?
I have a comment.
Okay.
What's going on with Burt's residential lot? I mean, it certainly is not residential by any stretch of imagination.
So that lot is separate and parking, private parking is allowed, um, for that, for so many cars. So we have talked with Burt's, um, if we need to go do another run, we told them that they can't do any commercial business of Burt's on that lot. Um, it's been about a month since I've perused that way, so I will take a look and.
Yeah, their trailers on it and other commercial activities.
Yeah, see what the storage is, we have a similar.
And some of that is related to their little renovation agenda, too, I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, so they have, do have some construction work going on.
I just wondered what was on.
But, yeah, we'll look.
At night they have on, uh, floodlights.
I'm surprised the neighbors aren't recording that.
So, so am I.
We haven't heard anything, um.
Yeah, 'cause you're.
Poor turtle.
Your neighbors. Alright, any other comments anybody has, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn!
You've got second, we're all ready.
Eric, thanks for your insight tonight.
Yes.
We told you, our compliments, we asked that porta potty, he added, this is his solace weekend, like Memorial Day, you know, uh.
Okay.